I'd like to call to order the city of Madeira Beach. Board of County Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, excuse me, regular meeting. It's Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Clerk, will you, oh, I guess first is innovation?
Our Father in Heaven give us the power to clearly discern right from wrong. Allow our words and our actions to be governed thereby and by the laws of this land. We ask for your inspiration to strive in our endeavors, dream, serve the public. We also ask that you direct us so that all things will be done correctly. We do this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, can you call a roll, please? Mayor Hendricks?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Price?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody have any comments about the agenda? Any changes?
Vice Mayor, just. One change to, we request to remove item 10, contracts agreements. A Clarion software licensing agreement to a future meeting.
Is that okay with everybody? Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Actually, that's just our agenda.
Okay, I'm out of practice, man. It's been awhile.
Me too.
It's been awhile.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Last item number 10.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Actually, Vice Mayor, you're the one that needs to be doing all that, okay?
That's right, I was waiting on her.
Oh, excuse me, but thank you for the prompt.
Okay.
Clerk, can you please call the roll? Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, oh, Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. All right, next is proclamations and presentations. I don't see the place filled up with firefighters, so. Are we?
We will.
I guess we're going to put that.
We'll reschedule those.
Okay. And next is public comment. Anybody have a public comment? You've got three minutes to make that comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. And please state your name and address, please.
Ray Kerr, Madeira Beach resident, District Two. First, I wanted to acknowledge our new city manager and Robin Gomez, correct? Okay. But my address is actually towards the city manager. It has to do with ordinance 2020-05, which was the ordinance. That was passed unanimously by this, this board to limit the. Speed on our waterways here in Madeira Beach. It was set up to with, or sent, it was approved unanimously, went into the section 78 of our code book. And was set up, sent up to FWC for their approval. We've not had that approval yet, so I want to make sure that it makes it into your agenda to have, to look into that. The second item has to do with the stop sign at 140th and Bayshore. Now that we've had a year or so to have that implemented. I'd request that. The board or the, the city actually contacted people within 300 feet of that intersection to see how that's working out. We do have. Pinellas County Police Department there consistently, so I would imagine there's some complaints. That's just an assumption on my part. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ray, I just wanted to make a comment to you. I did notice that there, there has been the Sheriff's Department in both on the corner of, excuse me, Island Drive and Crystal. They parked in the cul-de-sac at the end and they're catching people coming through that stop sign. And I did notice, I saw them sitting there, but they do sit over in the area on Bayshore also, and they watch the traffic there too. I've only seen them sitting there, but I do know they're catching them on Crystal. So something is working there too.
And we have been getting some complaints actually about people running that stop sign and the speed. And I believe we have a traffic study going on, correct?
Yes, and the item will come up at the next VOC workshop on January the 26th. So there'll be lots of data that'll be made available prior. We have surveyed some residents mainly on North Bayshore because the concerns were more on North Bayshore. But to give a heads up, a couple of the comments have been exactly what Mr. Kerr said about taking a look at the four-way stop on North-South Bayshore and 140th. So we will do that as well, but our main focus originally was on Bayshore between 140th and Island Drive. But that'll be at the next workshop.
And I guess I was remiss in not introducing Robin Gomez at the very beginning of this meeting. I, for me, it's old news, so I apologize, but obviously we do have a new city manager starting. We're thrilled to death and welcome Mr. Gomez.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Clerk, will you call the roll? Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. All right, next is public meetings. First one on our list is regarding the redevelopment of the JJB Property Holdings LLC. And since Linda isn't here, I guess we have someone else doing the presentation.
Yes, my name is Jenny Rowan. I'm the senior planner.
Okay, Jenny, you're going to present these together, right? Redevelopment and the, and the PD rezoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Item A and B will be presented together.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I just need to go over a couple of different things before the, we, we get moving on the actual substance of it. First of all, I wanted to remind you that although the item A is a legislative matter, it's not quadricial. Since you're hearing it at the same time as ordinance 2022-01, the PD rezone. I want to make sure that you understand that item B is a quadricial hearing. With that being said, I want to read the quadricial procedures that we should be using today on that. Then I'm going to swear in witnesses and so forth. So this is a quadricial hearing where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quadricial rather than a legislative capacity. At this quadricial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that's already been established. In a quadricial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find you in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Before we move any further, I need to find out if there needs to be any disclosure of any expert communications or conflicts of interest that anyone on the commission wants to disclose.
No.
Mayor?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, I want to go ahead and swear in everyone that's going to speak tonight. If you could stand up, raise your right hand if you're going to address this application. Are, are you going to do it, sir? Yeah, okay, if you raise your right hand, you sworn under oath, you swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, thank you. As for the quadricial hearing, under your rules, your rules set forth in the code. There are some obligations that I have as the city attorney, and they're set forth in section 2-9 under Order of Presentation. It says in paragraph A that the hearing shall begin with a statement by the city attorney, which shall include a summary of the application, the standards to be applied to the evidence to the board, the burden of proof, and the identity of all parties and the order of their presentations. So it also says the city attorney shall read any expert communication reports filed with the community development department or city clerk into the record of the hearing. Not aware of any of those, so let me talk to you about, as for the quadricial hearing portion. The brief summary is the nature of the request. It's a rezoning application for 1.1 acres more or less of contiguous parcels on either side of Gulf Boulevard from R3 medium density multifamily residential to plan development. Or plan development to plan development, C3 retail commercial to plan development or plan development to plan development. And R2 low-density multifamily residential to plan development or plan development. To allow for a single mixed-use development consisting of a 53-room hotel, three condominium units, restaurant, associated resort services, structured parking with ground floor retail, and open space east of the structured parking. Proposed hotel building height will be a maximum of 105 feet from the ground. The proposed structured parking with the ground floor retail will be a maximum of 55 feet from the ground. The proposed floor area ratio is 1.17 pursuant to the code as averaged across all properties. The planning commission, as the local planning agency voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the requested rezone with the associated concept plan based upon the findings that you'll see in a few moments. The burden of proof under your code, under section 2-10. This is, the applicant shall have the burden of proof, the hearing to show by a greater weight of the evidence that the application is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of the law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or, or any party, or maybe imposed by the board, which are intended to assure consistency and compliance. There are no affected parties that will be presenting tonight. There was none timely, notices timely filed, and therefore just going to be city staff and the applicant, and also the public has an opportunity to speak, there are just no affected parties. I think I've covered everything that is necessary under your code to discuss with you. I'd be happy to help you out through this proceeding, but we're going to go ahead and start with the presentation by the applicant. Under your code, the applicant is required to present first. Katie?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Mayor, who is joining us virtually, and commissioners. My name is Katie Cole. I'm with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant on this application. I do have a PowerPoint that Ms. Rowan has put up. I have copies here that I can distribute as well, which may be easier for you each to follow along, and also one for the clerk for the record. So I, I would like to start. Just to reiterate that this is a new application. It is, it is not a continuation of what you all saw last summer. And this new application was brought forth by the developer in an effort to respond to concerns of the neighbors, which we heard after your approval last summer. It made some improvements to the design and then responded to some staff comments as well as to how this could move forward. And so the developer made the very logical determination that while there was, there is litigation on the last approval with respect to the rezoning against the city. And rather than trying to sort out any of the issues involving the litigation. The developer was willing to make changes to the plan to reflect some of the concerns that had been expressed and go through this process again. And that is referenced in the nuance of the public notice as well as the agenda item, which states this is either a modification to an existing PD. Which your code requires a PD modification or change in the concept plan to be processed as if it were a new application. Or if it was considered, if, for instance, the litigation, which is still pending and has, there's been no rulings. If it had been ruled and determined your last approval was found invalid, this would serve as a new approval. But in essence, approval of you, which we certainly hope you do tonight and on second reading, would make the prior approval moot. A couple of housekeeping items before I get started. I would like to confirm that the application, including the traffic analysis, the response to comments, and the staff report are all included in the record of the proceedings. I didn't see the traffic analysis in your report, but it was submitted in November in conjunction with the new application and reviewed by the staff. So I do have copies here to confirm, and I perhaps just missed it online, but I. I do have copies here, so.
Let's go ahead and submit those. And Vice Mayor, since there's no one here to object other than city staff, I would. Opine that you should accept into evidence the record as presented by Ms. Cole so far and these additional documents. Actually document, it's this traffic report.
It is the traffic study. I didn't provide copies for everyone because I, I, it was a technical document, but I do have one in the record here, so.
So you just need to acknowledge it's received.
Yeah, okay, the city acknowledges receipt of the traffic study. Thank you.
Perfect. As I move through the presentation, we do have Robert Burgalisi.
Hang on just a second. I just want, okay, so we've received that into evidence, and I just want to make sure that, Vice Mayor, that we're receiving also the, the other materials that have been submitted, which would include the agenda package and the reports and the PowerPoints as well. That's what you're submitting in addition to that traffic report. So I would opine again that you should receive that into evidence. There would be no objection.
Okay, I will receive into evidence the entire packet in our agenda, the PowerPoint presentation and the traffic study that's been presented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just trying to clear the record.
Thank you. Also, as we move through the presentation, we do have the development team here, including Robert Burgalisi, a certified transportation planner, who prepared the traffic's report. And he will introduce himself with his credentials as an expert in the site plan and architectural plans prepared by Jack Boziak and his team, who have extensive experience in beach communities and design, and specifically permitting projects here in Madeira Beach. So moving forward, just a little bit of history, as you all know, the prior approval was in July of 2021. It's a PD ordinance 2021-01. It was a rezoning of several parcels to provide for a 56-room hotel with a rooftop bar, accessory meeting rooms, restaurants, and a parking garage. A legal challenge regarding the approval of the planned development was timely filed and is pending in court. Although the city and developer requested to stay that pending the results of this action. The development agreement was never adopted that had moved forward with that application. And so there are, is a companion development agreement with this application to incorporate not only the conditions of approval of the planned development, but also some additional conditions. That is not before you tonight. The only thing before you tonight are the request for improvement of a redevelopment plan pursuant to your code. The request for the rezoning to plan development with the updated concept plan. And then for your information, the redevelopment plan and the density intensity is based on a code provision that you have, which allows for averaging. This is an administrative approval, and so that was reviewed by staff prior to the application getting to you. So the application for Schooner Resort. Was submitted in October. A neighborhood meeting was held at the Cambria on November 2nd, 2021, to review the new plan. And after the neighborhood meeting, the applicant revised the plans to reflect not only staff comments that it had received, but also neighborhood comments. The planning board heard the application in December and recommended approval of the planned development and the redevelopment plan. And I Monday night heard the draft DA that you would hear next month in the event that you approved this on first reading and recommended approval of that as well. I do believe there's a typo when I said that last, this week's planning commission meeting was 2021, and it was intended to say 2022. I'm sorry, my brain hasn't clicked forward yet. As I restated, the proposal is for the approved tonight is your, the request for the approval of the redevelopment plan and the approval for an amendment. I just wanted to highlight what is actually included in this concept plan. On the west side of Gulf Boulevard is a 53-room hotel, a second-floor pool and amenities, and a rooftop restaurants and resort services. On the east side of the proper, of Gulf Boulevard are three levels of structured parking. It's a two-story garage with three levels of structured parking, ground floor retail and open spaces. Crosswalk pursuant to FDOT standards, improvements of 145th and 146th Avenue with sidewalk and landscaping, and pedestrian connectivity along the east side of Gulf Boulevard with a proposed fountain and, and breezeway. The proposed plan incorporates seven stories above parking, which includes the rooftop uses. And from Gulf Boulevard, it does appear to be. A six-story building because the rooftop uses are limited to, the reason it's considered a story there is it, there are enclosed bathrooms on the, on the rooftop. And so that in essence, under your code, makes it an actual story. But as one of the considerations to the neighbors, the applicant moved all of the usable space to the west end side and toward the pool to mitigate the appearance of height on Gulf Boulevard. On the parking deck looking east from Gulf Boulevard, there are 107 parking spaces total between the two parcels. 20, approximately 2,800 square feet of retail on the ground floor, open space along both Gulf Boulevard and in the rear to the east as a buffer to the residential area. And this is a rendering of the parking garage that was updated since the planning commission meeting. The staff had requested at that meeting for, to work with the applicant to create a more pedestrian-friendly and finished building, so it didn't appear as a parking garage. And so this is what was recently submitted to the city. Wanted to point out the ground floor parking deck and the retail shown here in the parking garage, and then the open space area to the east. While the applicant suggested a park area to transition to the neighborhood to the east, there is a condition of approval that the staff has, has asked for commission input on. And we will be discussing that, I think, later in the meeting. It will be refined at site plan, but currently this applicant does not object to the condition that is in the recommended ordinance with respect to this area. The front elevation of the site, I think it's important to note when the city advertised this, they advertised at 105 feet. But this is the grade from grade, and that's not how your code defines height. Your code defines height as being measured from design flood elevation. But it was important to the staff and the applicant and the city and the applicant that the residents heard what the overall height would be from grade. Because as you all know, can, building in a beach community with base flood elevation gets to be somewhat confusing trying to determine how tall things actually are. The ground floor site plan allows for ingress and egress off Gulf Boulevard and circulation and parking garage and access to an elevator lobby to go up to the second floor. The rooftop amenity level you can see is limited only to the two bathrooms in the bar area there. Whereas the plan that was approved last summer included residential units, the transient units on the roof, and had a much more significant use on the roof. One of the criteria generally in the planned development discusses height, and that's been a discussion that we've had with the neighbors and with staff relative to this. And so I just wanted to go through a few items. The existing projects to the west, west of Gulf Boulevard are not located within the special area plan. Here are three examples of height. As the staff report indicates, there are not any hotels outside of the special area plan that have a PD zoning. So it's difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison of what would have been approved under a PD versus otherwise. But there are existing development sites along the west of Gulf Boulevard. These are just three as an example. You see the ocean sands and these are just Google and measuring, so you can see the approximately nine to 10 stories. Madeira Towers. The shores of Madeira condos. Of course, this site is directly adjacent to the county park, which does not have any development, but then. Is located and serves as a transition to the other Gulf Boulevard. So first, looking at the criteria of the redevelopment plan approval and talking about what that does. So as Mr. Trask indicated, this is a legislative hearing under your code. And years ago, the city adopted a redevelopment to try to vest existing units and ensure that the transient uses and the residential uses that existed currently in, within the city were retained and maintained, even if the sites became non-conforming. So it, the proposed plan vests the existing development rights from, from these properties and allows for the redevelopment of those units accumulated over on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. There are 31 units existing in the existing Schooner Resort, and those 31 will be retained on the site, together with the density that is available on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. And that's where the density averaging comes in. So we took the. And that's where the density averaging comes in. So we took the overall site acreage and used all of the density and put it on the west side reflective of your comprehensive plan, which encourages the tourist uses on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. There has been a preliminary site plan review by staff and the concept plan is before you today. And the redevelopment plan will be approved hopefully by you tonight. Density and intensity averaging is evidenced by this FAR data sheet, which is included in the plans that were reviewed by staff and distributed. And this shows the site areas and the total is just over an acre. And the individual FAR that's permissible on each of the sites that are subject to this application shows the maximum FAR equivalent based on the site area and what the proposed FAR. And you can see that the maximum FAR equivalent for the sites accumulate, consolidated as a whole would be a 1.19 FAR. And the proposed FAR is a 1.17 under that threshold. I do believe on the first page of your redevelopment plan staff report, and I know Ms. Rowan will fix this, but there is a statement that says the proposed FAR is 1.7, and that was just a typo. It's 1.17. Moving on to the planned development rezoning, section 110386 of the code allows for a planned development designation for well-designed projects in order to provide a flexibility of design, imaginative and functional design, a clearly defined public purpose and clearly stated intent of the comprehensive plan. And that's in the intent and purpose section. The clearly instated intent of a comprehensive plan for this area discusses containing a mix of uses ensuring compatibility with the community. There are specific requirements for your review as the Board of Commissioners of a PD. The review by the Board of Commissioners differs from that review of the planning commission. But the staff has reviewed all of these criteria and they're incorporated in the staff report one by one. And I know Ms. Rowan is going to go through each of these in detail, so I don't want for us to be redundant. So I have tried to more globally respond, show you the project, which based on the application and the evidence that's there clearly meets these criteria. And I know Ms. Rowan's going through each one of these one by one. One thing I wanted to highlight, or there are some dimensional criteria that are required in, in the code. You can see number four. It's a minimum of a five-foot sidewalk will be provided along any street right-of-way. The landscaping plan and the site plan shows that. You can see that the total land area within the development and the area devoted to each functional portion should be adequate to serve its intended purpose. And that is evidenced by the actual development and the size and the mass and the fact that the FAR is under what is otherwise permissible on the site and the height in being consistent with those surrounding properties on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. The open space adequate for the type of development, generally tourist development doesn't include specific open space, but in this site and in this development, there was the opportunity to provide the buffer area on the east side of the parking garage between the residential area that exists today and the proposed parking deck. And so we think that that's an important inclusion to the site. There's no outdoor storage of merchandise proposed. There's common ownership among all of the properties and there will be. There is, and so each one of these is met through the proposal before you. With respect to consistency of, of the comprehensive plan, as you all are aware, not only does the code require consistency with the comprehensive plan, but any decision that you make with respect to zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the code outlines very specific criteria with, in, in regard to this, including whether there's a change of use or designation proposed. And there is not a current, any type of change in general designation. The current use is seasonal tourists on the west side. And that is consistent with policy 1.8.6 of the future land use plan. And the proposal consolidates all of these tourist uses on the west side, which is also considered in the comprehensive plan. A portion of the site functions as hotel with these ancillary uses. Non-resident land use activities should comprise no more than 20% of the FAR, residential and tourist accommodations to comprise a maximum, a minimum of 70% of FAR. And you can see from the site data table that less than 5% of the proposed use is retail, and that's incorporated in site data table and the design. The east side of Gulf Boulevard is currently in use as retail, residential, and vacant lot. And the proposed uses of retail and associated structure parking are allowed uses currently in the C3 zoning district. One of the criteria being, the site is contiguous with the city code definition, pursuant to the city code definitions. And both the floor area and density are calculated for the project as a whole. And this is consistent with both the city code and the countywide rules consideration. It's regulated accordance with the land development standards. The site design is approved through the site plan process. And zoning approval requires your, the compliance states requires operation and limiting the most intense activities associated with full restaurant services. Ground level retail reduction of parking footprint further objectives 1.5 and 1.9 of, of the future land use element of your comprehensive plan and the associated policies of the proposed, of the mobility elements. Attention to architectural detail, scale, and buffering is referenced in the fault, in the objective shown here and consolidation of development of several lots and concentration of parking furthers policies 1.8 of the future land use element. The PD is the only available method to achieve what is otherwise the allowable densities in the underlying land use categories. And so in order to maximize the opportunities available in the code through density and intensity averaging, there's a two-step process. And one is to look at the underlying land use designations. And then the second is to look at what the maximum intensity and densities would be, and then where those could be located on the site. And so by, by rezoning this to a planned development category, it allows all of this density to be clustered on the west side of Gulf Boulevard, consistent with the comprehensive plan's direction that that's where the tourist uses should be located. One of the purpose and intent, as stated in the code of the project, is that it provides a public interest. And some examples of the public interest evidenced in both the application and as shown on the plans is that it redevelops antiquated and vacant property, promotes the infill development, promotes mixed use, accessible pedestrian-supported development, reduces the automobile traffic by consolidating in one site. It provides valet parking for hotel guests. It improves the facilities. It enhances the value of the surrounding properties, provides retail and enhanced parking in the neighborhood, and it provides neighborhood benefits with the streetscapes on 145th and 146th. I wanted to recap what was approved or what was submitted in October versus what's before you now, because I think it's important to note that this applicant sincerely took to heart the comments received at the neighborhood meeting in November, worked very closely with the staff in determining. They removed a entire floor of, of the project and also in, in our, in our mind, removed one and a half floors because the rooftop bars with the bathroom, while it may be counted as a story for the purpose of this hearing, certainly is not adding to the height in any significant manner. There's a reduction in the FAR, a reduction in the total square footage. There's a similar density. It's just moved in a different place. The rooftop design, I think, is significantly different with respect to the removal of the two units and the consolidation and clustering of the uses to the west. The retail space has been reduced to accommodate the fountain and some more of the public space. And the parking actually has been increased based on the redesign of the garage. And with that, I would like to introduce Robert Burgalisi, who is a transportation planner, who I know one of the questions always is about traffic on Gulf Boulevard and can speak to those issues.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Robert Burgalisi. I'm an AICP certified planner and a PTP professional transportation planner. I'm a principal at Gulf Coast Consulting, 13825 Icott Boulevard, Speed 605 in Clearwater. And I've been sworn. I prepared the, the traffic assessment for this project back in November. And the results of that were that our trip generation is 632 daily trips, of which 57 vehicle trips would occur during the PM peak hour. The Forward Pinellas Level of Service Report, which is produced by the, by the county, they, they do traffic counts and traffic assessments on, on all, all the county roads and state roads. Shows that Gulf Boulevard is an arterial road operating at level service D. The existing volume to capacity ratio is 0.543, and with the impacts of this project would slightly increase to 0.558. And, but LOSD operations would be maintained. Now, what that means in plain English with these volume to capacity ratios is this roadway is operating at about half of its capacity. There's multiple benefits and significant public benefits for this project. First and foremost, the consolidation of multiple access points into one driveway on the west side of Gulf Boulevard to conform with FDOT policies. Basically removes the, the free-for-all we have out there today with back-out parking, back-in parking onto a state road. Creates new improved parking garage on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, removes the broken asphalt and shell that you have on the east side, and replaces it with paved parking with access to 146th Avenue. Will also be providing new sidewalks along 145th Avenue and 146th Avenue. And will be providing a new pedestrian crosswalk in conformance with FDOT policies to enhance pedestrian safety. Based on the mobility ordinance for traffic generation this low, a detailed traffic study is not required at this point. However, a detailed traffic study would be required when we go to do the FDOT permit to, to do the work in the FDOT right-of-way. So we will be doing one as part of the FDOT permit. And just to sum up, significant public benefits to this redevelopment, one driveway instead of this existing situation, crosswalk and open space on the lot to the east side. And I'll turn it back to Katie.
Thank you, Robert. And I think it's important to note that the applicant and Mr. Burgalisi met with FDOT to review the project and has already received substantial feedback from FDOT in support of the benefits that Mr. Burgalisi spoke, and he can speak directly to that if, if you all desire. So with that, we feel that the evidence presented in the application and in the staff report significantly with its detailed analysis of each criteria that you've had the opportunity to review, provides the evidence to, to approve both the redevelopment plan and the planned development rezoning for the aggregation of the property to a common site plan and public benefit, including the improvements to 145th Street, crosswalks as approved by FDOT, and the open space area to the east of the parking deck. And we would respectfully request your approval of the same. So with that, I would turn it over to the staff. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So this is a time for the commission to ask any questions of the applicant, whether it's Ms. Cole or the traffic expert. So do you have any questions before staff makes a presentation? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Mayor, do you have any questions of Ms. Cole or the traffic expert?
I do not. We've been over this a number of times. I'm satisfied with the development. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's, then we can go ahead and move to city staff presentation. And Jenny, if you could just introduce yourself and your job responsibilities here at the city and, and your experience that you have in planning, that would be helpful.
Hello, I am Jenny Rowan. I am the senior planner here at the city of Madeira Beach. I have a master's in preservation planning and am a certified flood pain manager. I have been a planner for about five years as experience and have worked for the city of Madeira Beach for almost two years in total as a planner.
Okay. You want to go ahead with your presentation?
Yes. First, wanted to start out that there is a typo, like Ms. Cole mentioned on page 72 of your packet. The FAR should be 1.17 instead of 1.7. That was the typo. Here's a Google map reflecting the location of the project that you are aware of now. And an aerial overlay showing the project location with the current zoning. To the left is a map showing the zoning prior to the ordinance 2021-01. So you can see we have R3 west of Gulf Boulevard, C3, and R2 east of Gulf Boulevard, and is proposed to be PD zoning. So the purpose of a PD zoning is to accommodate integrated and well-designed developments, associate zoning with plans and standards specific to the project, provide flexibility of design and encourage imaginative approaches to the design, ensure development is functional, high-quality, and compatible with adjacent and nearby lands and activities. It furthers the planning goals of the community and encourages mix of uses. So there is a neighborhood meeting requirement. Section 110-392 requires a meeting prior to consideration of the rezoning application and the proposed development plan. This meeting was held on November 3rd of 2021. Citizens of neighboring properties attended and spoke. There's a video and transcript recording which are online, and the transcripts are provided in your packet on pages 185 to 211. No assurances regarding design or function were given outside of those contained in the proposed development plan. And here's a slide showing the beachside site plan, which is west of Gulf Boulevard. This is where the hotel is proposed to be. And the east side site plan of Gulf Boulevard, this contains the retail, parking structure, and open space. So you also received a packet on the dais, and this is an update to some of the concept plan sheets. East of all of them, all the updates were on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. So we have the new rendering of the garage, and that shows the additional architectural features. It also shows the landscaping and then just the sidewalk measurement. So those were the updates that you were provided today. So the total density is 53 temporary lodging units and three residential units. This is achieved by using the redevelopment process. Currently, there are three units on the RM lot, which is the R2 lot, and 31 temporary lodging units on the RFM lots. That's west of Gulf Boulevard. The ROR lots, those are the C3 lots, including the area for retail, comes to 22 temporary lodging units at 45 units per acre. So through redevelopment plan, the use must be legally non-conforming. So the standard was met. The redevelopment occurs when the density in the existing and proposed is greater than could be approved as a new development under current standards. So this is, the standard was met as well. The LPA voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the requested redevelopment. So in the code of ordinances, section 110-97B2, this is for the redevelopment. this is for the redevelopment duplexes and triplexes on a non-conforming lot. Duplexes and triplexes on a non-conforming lot may be rebuilt to the existing non-conformity of the new structure if the new structure complies with the required front setback, height, parking requirements and floodplain regulations affected at the time of building permit application. Section 110-97B4 discusses redevelopment of the multifamily hotel motel motor lodges. Multifamily hotel motel and motor lodges may be rebuilt to the same density, height and side setback, but must comply with the front setback, the CCCL floodplain regulations, fire codes and parking regulations as contained in their certificate of occupancy and any other requirements effective at the time of building permit application. So in this map here, it has an aerial overlay showing the project and the red outline indicates those redevelopment areas. So west of Gulf Boulevard, those three R3 or PD lots, those have 31 temporary lodging units on them currently. So those are being asked to be redeveloped for 31 lodging units. And then on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, that R2 or PD lot that's outlined, that currently has a triplex. And so the applicant is asking to redevelop that as three residential units. The proposed development, the triplex or the three condo units and 31 temporary lodging units will comply with the CCCL setback, parking requirements, fire codes and floodplain regulations. The plan indicates that the base flood elevation and freeboard requirements and shows that the building will not extend across the CCCL. The development will also require site plan review before the planning commission. And planned developments do not have required setbacks. Setbacks are proposed in the concept plan. PDs may allow be allowed additional stories, its height, if voluntary provisions of civic or community enhancements is provided. And we'll go through that. So that's in section 110-386. A maximum, at a maximum be designed to reflect the averaging intensity, height and massing of the development pattern on surrounding properties of similar zoning and use. The application must demonstrate that the proposed PD zoning district meets the clearly stated intent of the comprehensive plan and a clearly defined public purpose. Additional stories above the limitation limitations of the underlying conventional or PD zoning district at the time of the application for PD is officially sufficient may be considered in light of voluntary provisions of civic or community enhancements. So some of those examples would be ground floor retail, expanded setbacks, enhanced landscaping and other design enhancements furthering the policies and strategies of the comprehensive plan. So that's from the code of ordinances. So this project includes ground floor retail on that east side and expanded setback on that east side with the retail and parking structure to that R2 residential neighborhood, enhanced landscaping throughout the entire plan and design enhancements. So here's the zoning district setbacks for redevelopment. As you can see, the R3 and R2 I just have in there, the allowed and then the proposed versus the concept plan. So the redevelopment of the R3 lot may be built to the same height and side setbacks, but must comply with the front setback and CCCL. The current side setback of the north side is 17.5 feet and the south is 8.9 feet, which is a total of 26.4. The current front setback is seven feet and the current height is 26 feet. It also included the C3 lots, the total setback in height for the allowed and proposed, even though that is not being redeveloped under the redevelopment process. So redevelopment in the comprehensive plan. You see that policy 1.9.2 and policy 1.8.7 both support this redevelopment plan. Here's the intensity or the floor area ratio, which Ms. Cole went over earlier. As you can see, the applicant is allowed a 1.19 FAR through the intensity and density averaging and they are proposing a 1.17 FAR. So in one, section 110-393, review of the BOC. So in their analysis of the rezoning application, the proposed development plan pursuant to this division and prior to official action, the board of commissioners shall consider the recommendation of the local planning agency and ensure the rezoning application is in conformance with the criteria listed in section 110-390. So we'll go through this whole section. And the local planning agency voted five to zero to recommend approval of the requested rezone with associated concept plan based on staff's finding with conditions A through Q. And these conditions are found in one pages 135 through 137 of your packet. And we will go through those as well. So section 110-390, which is the reimbursement of expenses. The applicant shall provide for reimbursement of expenses incurred by the city deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designee to review and process a planned development district. An invoice was provided to the developer on January the 11th. So now we'll go through section 110-393, the review of the BOC. So one, land uses within the development shall be appropriate in their proposed location, in their relationships to each other and in their relationships with uses and activities on adjacent and nearby properties. There is no change of land use requested with this PD and the mixed use further several policies in the land use and mobility elements. The requested uses are permitted both by the land use and underlying zoning. The areas adjacent to the structured parking will be used for open space and drainage. Number two, the development shall comply with the applicable city plans and planning policies and shall have a beneficial effect both upon the area of the city in which it is proposed to be established and upon the city as a whole. Proposed development will comply with the city plans and planning policies and will have a beneficial effect on the area of the city which is proposed. Current and future use is supported by policy 1.8.6 and policy 1.8.7 of the comprehensive plan. And the development furthers objectives 1.5 and 1.9 and associated policies of the mobility element. 5.1.5.1, 5.1.5.2 and 5.1.5.3. The attention to architectural detail, scale and buffering supports objectives 1.7, 1.8 and 2.1 of the comprehensive plan. And still on number two, the consolidating development of several lots and concentrating parking and curb cuts supports policy 1.8.12 and promotes redevelopment of vacant property and field development, development of scale appropriate tourist accommodations, mixed use, accessibility and pedestrian supportive development types reduces traffic conflicts, which is consolidating multiple entries, and we'll go over, and upgrades traffic circulation and access standards. So on to number three. Stipulations of approval of planned development plan may include requirements to construct improvements, dedicate needs to property and easements or contribute money to improvements to public facilities such as roadways, new medians, sanitary sewer and water facilities, drainage facilities, street lighting, landscape signage, park and recreational facilities, walkway and sidewalks, bearing of utility lines along a budding right way or adopted planned street safe improvements. The developer will mill and resurface the roadways on 145th Ave and 146th Ave from Gulf Boulevard to the eastern property limits. The sidewalks will be improved as shown in the concept plans. Enhanced landscape will be provided and maintained by the developer and all new utility lines will be buried. On to number four. Minimum of a five-foot sidewalk shall be provided along any street right away or on private property by easement dedication if the right of way is insufficient with. The standard was met. Number five. The total land area within the development and the area devoted to each functional proportion of the development shall be adequate to serve its intended purpose. The total land area within the development and area devoted for each functional purpose of the development is adequate to serve its intended purpose. The unified development plan as amended by the developer is being requested as a PD to facilitate the consolidation of density and intensity and to increase building height. The portion of the project east of Gulf Boulevard is designed to step down in intensity from Gulf Boulevard towards the R2 zoning district through an expanded setback and open space. The development proposal consolidates all tourist and residential room density allowed for the entire site within the three lots west of Gulf Boulevard landward of the CCCL. Okay, number six. Streets, utilities, drainage facilities, recreation area, building heights, sizes and yards and vehicular parking and loading facilities shall be appropriate for the particular use involved and shall equal or exceed the level of design and construction quality required of similar land development elsewhere in the city. The proposed development will reduce traffic conflicts with the consolidation of multiple entries, upgrade current traffic circulation and access standards, improve facility provisions with updated standards and design, improve the built environment aesthetics, enhance the value of property and surrounding properties, provide retail services and enhance parking and beach accessibility adjacent to and in support of the public park. The open space east of the structured parking will provide drainage, enhanced landscaping and expanded setbacks from the residential areas. Drainage will meet FDOT drainage connection and roadway improvements, SWF MUD approval, city public works department approval for solid waste and civil and utility site plan approval through the city's engineer. The traffic can conflict reduction. The proposed development will close and consolidate nearly 200 feet of open curb cut plus two driveways on the east into one driveway enclosed 150 feet of open curb and pull-up parking along the west side of Gulf Boulevard into one driveway. This will greatly enhance the traffic mobility and safety in the area and is a distinct benefit to the community resulting from the redevelopment of the area. It also furthers the comprehensive plan goals through improvement to improve pedestrian function and enhance safety through redevelopment. So continuing, number six. The project meets and in some instances exceeds this review criteria. Through section 110-386, the applicant may request additional stories through the PD zoning process. The height may be considered in light of voluntary provision of civic or community enhancements. This is what we discussed earlier in this presentation. The community enhancement that qualifies this development for height includes a plant, planning staff asks for the developer to include floodproof retail on the ground floor on the east side of Gulf Boulevard to provide a more pedestrian character to the area and ensure a mixed and more resilient economy. This adds considerable expense to the to the development, but furthers the policies and strategies of the comprehensive planning. Development also includes enhanced landscaping and expanded setback from residential area, design enhancements to all buildings and the milling and resurfacing of 145th and 146th Ave. Number seven. The visual character and community amenities shall be equal or better in quality than that required by standard zoning districts for similar development. This standard is met. The development regulations do not have design standards for these zones or land use designations. The proposed development will be more attractive in visual character and was currently present on the properties through redevelopment of the site and enhanced landscaping. Number eight. Open space shall be adequate for the type of development and the population density of the proposed development. Open space is adequate for the type of development and the population density of the proposed development. The entire RM lot will remain open and undeveloped. Number nine. Outdoor storage of merchandise or material shall not shall be prohibited and plans do not have outdoor storage of merchandise or materials. Number 10. Areas proposed for common ownership shall be subject to a reliable and continuing maintenance guarantee. There are no areas proposed for common ownership and the landscaping with within the property shall be maintained in good and healthy conditions at all times by the developer. Number 11. All existing signs and sign structures to be to be demolished and removed, this clarifies number 11, which is all existing non-conforming signs or sign structures shall be removed. Number 12. In the case of developments which are to be constructed in several phases, the proposed phase shall be shown on the overlay development plan. The proposed construction phases shall individually comply with the standards set forth in this section in order that if for any reasons, construction ceases prior to completion of the entire planned development, the resulting partially complete project will adequately serve its purchasers and occupants and will not cause a general public problem. The project will occur in one phase. So continuing this section 110-393, review by the BOC. Lastly, the board of commissioners must review the plans, drawings and schematics for the proposed development plan in detail. Such drawings shall define the physical character of the project, including all building and architectural treatments. The board of commissioners review will ensure conformance with the following design standards. Number one. That treatment of all the sides and rear of all buildings with the planned development shall be compatible in amenity and appearance to treatments given to the street fringes of the same buildings. The standard is met. Number two. All buildings in the layout and design shall be an integral part of the development and have convenient pedestrian access to and from adjacent uses. As you can see in this slide, everything that's in the yellow is that pedestrian access. So the standard is met. Number three. Individual buildings shall be related to each other in design, mass, materials, placement and connects to provide a visually and physically integrated development. This standard is also met. Number four. Landscape treatments for walkways, plazas, arcades, roads and services and parking areas shall be designed as an integral part of the coordinated landscape design for the entire project area. The landscape plan submitted shall include the anticipated appearance of the trees and landscape materials after five years of growth to visually provide their side in proportion relative to the proposed buildings, view corridors, curb appeal, pedestrian corridors, et cetera. The standard is met. Number five. The project's scale and the size, color and proportion of the building elements, components and materials are appropriate and harmonious with surrounding neighborhood structures. In this slide, you see three other buildings or four other buildings that are that are nearby the site on both the west side and the east side along with two renderings from the development. And this standard is met. Number six. All mechanical equipment, electrical equipment, rooftop equipment refuse, refuse area associated with this project shall be screened and this standard is met. Number seven. Appropriate building materials are being used. The use or employment of any of the following is generally considered inappropriate and will not be considered unless appropriately integrated into the project meeting all other criteria, including aesthetic criteria of this article. So A is corrugated metal siding, it's not included. B prefabricated metal buildings or their components, that's not included. Primary colors or black, that's not included. D false windows or doors. So you can see in the updated garage rendering, there are molions on the garage to, but that creates an appropriate design that's more cohesive with the surrounding area, which is acceptable. E unmodified formula and trademark buildings and structures, not included. So this standard, number seven, is met. Number eight. The project's location and design adequately protects or enhances unique site characteristics, such as those related to scenic views, natural vistas, waterways or similar features. So the standard is met with conditions I, J and L that we'll get to in just a minute, which are leave no trace and beach cleanup, sea turtle protection and a dune walkover system. Number nine. The project appropriately integrates landscape elements into the site plan and building sign. Planting shall be a size to give the appearance that the project is settled into a mature landscape. The landscape submittal shall include a description of each tree and plant proposed on the site by type and details relative to a maximum height or size and color at maturity. The standard was met. Number ten. The signage and other building aperturances are integral components of the building appropriately scaled and consistent in character with the building's overall design. This standard is met. Number eleven. The project incorporates defensible space concepts of crime prevention through environmental design. A land lighting plan shall be provided to review safety considerations for pedestrians and motorists as well as environmental impacts. The lighting provided is through the garage and all lighting will be in compliance with sea turtle lighting standards. This standard is met. So LPA and staff recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one with conditions as listed in section one A through Q, which I will read right after this, and as regulated through the development agreement process. I will point out that on condition N, when I read it, we do need direction from the BOC on condition N. So conditions. A, an existing condition demolition and CSWM plan is required and will be available for, per the NTDS permit and development review. Per section fourteen dash one twenty-three, all utilities serving the proposed facility must be underground, specifically the overhead aerial located on the north side of one forty-fifth avenue must be underground. C, provide location of fire department connection on final site plan. D, provide authorization from FDOT for new crosswalk location adjacent to property as condition of final site plan. If FDOT authorization cannot be obtained, the site plans must be reevaluated for the pedestrian access. E, provide a statement and plan on final site plan detailing requirement for a valet parking system for hotel guests to mitigate the danger of pedestrian or auto conflict between the hotel building on the west and the parking on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. Unless and until the Florida Department of Transportation provides a crosswalk with the associated protective lighting and signaling to position directly between the hotel and the parking on the east of Gulf Boulevard. Valet services shall be available twenty-four seven as a condition of development plan approval. When the crosswalk is provided as described, valet services will continue to be provided during the hours of food and beverage operations plus one half hour after. F, the development will be required to meet all appropriate land development regulations during the development review process. G, the hotel can provide hotel guests with lounge-type chairs and cabanas free use on the beach, which is westward of the CCL, and will provide services to these guests as customary for hotels. Non-guest hotels will have access to the restaurant of the hotel, but full restaurant services will not be extended to the beach and no tables or standard chairs or picnic tables and seating will be allowed. H, the hotel and events operations will utilize the beach area for special events approved by city special event permit. I. Hotel staff will police the area used by customers to ensure it is cleaned and free of debris of any kind and that all furnishings and equipment are removed nightly in accordance with leave no trace requirements per city ordinance. J, where turtle nests are found, hotel access and operations will be altered as needed to ensure the integrity of the nest and safety of the hatchlings. All hotel rooms and public areas will be posted with permanent notices regarding sea turtle safety and requirements. Alter, turtle lighting requirements, including the window tinting, are mandatory and may be updated and amended from time to time, will be met on an ongoing basis for turtle season per Florida stat, state statutes and city ordinances. K, the design of the retail and structured parking will include an architectural detail or unique design to disguise the floor, parking floors of the building, creating a consistent aesthetic with the first floor commercial. And we received that, and that is in your packet today, that, the rendering of the garage. L, a dune walkover is required from the hotel ground floor to beach access to ensure preservation and protection of the dune system. M, the dumpster for the hotel may require more space. The site is allowed to lose one parking space to increase the dumpster size in the hotel area that's west of the, of Gulf Boulevard. The dumpster size will be determined at the site, site stage, site plan stage. N, the residential medium lot located on one forty-fifth avenue, shown as a park on the concept plan, can include private recreation area ancillary to private residential use through the PD process. However, responsibility for construction, maintenance, security and liability for the park rests with the developer and landowner. As an ancillary used, the lot can be developed only for service of the principal use, which is residential, those three units allowed by redevelopment, and as such would not serve the public benefit. Staff recommends the lot be designed for open space and the level of drainage that could otherwise be required to accommodate the allowed point seven impervious surface ratio. Condition O. The parking areas must meet design standards of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, chapter one ten zoning, article seven, off-street parking and loading. P, development must meet all floodplain requirements in chapter ninety-four of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances. Areas below base flood elevation plus four feet of freeboard in the coastal A zone will be allowed to, allowed for use as enclosed dry floodproof space only when a signed and sealed engineer report from a registered engineer from the state of Florida states the flood velocity does not exceed five feet per second and shows the conformance with certain human intervention limits can be achieved. And Q, no activity involving amplified sound shall be conducted exterior to or upon the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel. Provided however, the foregoing shall not preclude the use of music in connection with the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel so, so long as the music is directed towards the west, which is a beach, and is otherwise baffled to prevent the sound from traveling to the north, south or east of the hotel building. The developer shall enter into a separate recordable form restrictive covenant in favor of the city to be recorded at the time of recording of the development agreement, setting forth the aforementioned use restrictions. The form of the restrictive covenant will be attached to the development agreement as exhibit C. Outdoor uses and activities are allowed for the east parcels in accordance with land use designations in all city ordinances in effect on the date the hotel building permit is issued. And that is it.
This is the time for commission to ask any questions of city staff. Does anyone have any questions to city staff?
I do.
Vice Mayor.
I have to find them. I made a lot of scribbles here. The amount of space between the parking garage on the east side and Gulf Boulevard, what is that amount? Because I thought I saw a slide up there that just said five feet. And I was wondering how.
Yes, I have a slide here that has the setbacks. So you are referring to this east, east of Gulf Boulevard, the parking structure and retail? So the proposed is five feet from the property line would be like the retail and structured garage is the front setback from the property line. You can also see this in the concept plan and the.
Yeah, but it was so small, I couldn't read it. So I don't know what that means. How far back is the garage from Gulf Boulevard?
Oh, from Gulf Boulevard, I see.
I think we're building our buildings way too close to Gulf Boulevard, so.
Um, I do not have that measurement in front of me. The architect might, may be able to answer. Would that be after my, my questioning, correct?
We'll get them to come up. Let's just answer all the questions that you have for city staff first before we bring someone else.
Okay.
Yeah.
So she can't answer that one, so then. Really, I think that was it for the city.
Any other commissioners have questions? Mayor, do you have questions?
No, I'm fine, Tom, thank you.
All right, Ms. Cole, do you have any? I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner. Is your mic on? We can't hear you over here.
Can we go over the parking again? Because I didn't see a lot of detail in this packet. I believe it's a hundred and twenty-six split spaces. And if I look at our code, they need one per room plus one for every five rooms. So that puts us up at sixty-four.
Yes.
We're going to give them a space for the dumpster for sort sixty-three. I'm assuming that the hotel employees, of which they are going to, in the calculation is forty-eight, they are included into using those sixty-three spots. They don't, we don't have to have other assigned spaces for the hotel employees.
Just a minute. So for tourist lodging facilities, I'm, I'm reading from, let me, the section of code. This is.
One ten nine seven one?
Yes, correct. So section one ten dash nine seven one, the number of spaces, the tourist lodging facility is one, one per bed, two-bed or sleeping units plus one space for three or more bedrooms and one space for each five units or a portion thereof.
We don't have any that have more than three or more than two beds.
So, so it's one for, one per unit and then one space for each five units.
Correct, so that should be the fifty-three plus another.
Yes, and I have it here.
Well.
So I, so it's fifty-three parking spaces plus eleven parking spaces and so that comes out to sixty-four parking spaces.
Okay, so that's handling employee, hotel employees also.
There's no, yeah, there's no requirement in the code discussing the employee. So that's all of the, the hotel.
Okay.
The units.
But they do need parking spots for bar and restaurant employees.
Correct, and so this is everything ancillary to the hotel. If you look at that section one ten dash nine seven one, below all the required spaces in B, B four, hotel buildings with mixed uses. The hotel required parking must be met with fifty percent of required parking for ancillary use, so.
But, we're not talking guests, that's, we understand that there's none needed for guests, but there's needed for employees.
So the employees are, let me get to that. The employees, if you look back in that section one ten dash nine seven one, for the restaurant, the sit-down restaurant, bar, lounge, nightclub, that's one per four seats plus one space for each two employees. So we were given an employee count and that's how that was calculated for the retail, for the restaurant sections in the hotel and then all of those restaurants and the conference room are counted at fifty percent since it is ancillary to the hotel. Does that make sense?
Okay. What was the number of employees?
Um, I do not have it in my notes tonight, but I know that I was given that by the developer and calculated it as well. So I, I know that the retail and services came out to ten parking spaces. And remember, that's at the fifty percent requirement. That's because it's ancillary to the hotel. And the, oh, sorry, that was the, the restaurant was twenty. Oh, there's eight employees, sorry, I do have that with me. So the restaurant is one parking space for four seats and that's at fifty percent. And then they had eight employees, so it came out to twenty parking spaces. And the conference room does not have an employee requirement in the code. So that's one parking space per six seats and that's still at fifty percent because it's ancillary to the hotel. That came out to six parking spaces. And the roof deck, which is the restaurant and that's, that's a category that it's under, is one parking space per four seats. That's at fifty percent as well as the four, four employees. And so that came out to twenty parking spaces total that's required by our code.
Okay, so where are we for the total?
So all of that, along with the three residential units and three residential units require two parking spaces per unit. So that comes out to six. And the retail services, this is on the east side, so that's not the fifty percent. That's totaled a hundred percent. That comes out to ten parking spaces. So there's a requirement of one hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. And what is provided, so you also get in that section one ten dash nine seven one B, there's a bicycle credit and there's also motorcycle credits up to four parking spaces. So they have credits for the bicycle stands. They also have four credits for the motorcycle spots. So that comes out to one hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces.
Okay, then. And that, that's good. This is something that everybody talks about, so having it out is good. But once they start doing special events. do do we need to restrict it until they get the valet parking before they can have special events or?
We could. That's something for you to decide. That's not something that we have, that staffs discuss with the developer, about special events. But that's a concern that you could bring up and ask the developer, and we can work with that.
Okay.
I would also like to point out that all the parking requirements, I know this is very small, but it's listed on ASP 1.0 in the site data table.
So how many parking spaces does the hotel have?
So they have a credit of 100.
So how many are we, how many are we saying on paper that they have?
129.
129, and that's the exact same amount that you've determined from?
I think it's 126 is what she.
The 126 is what's required. That's what's required.
129 is what we have.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. In the document with the meetings in the neighborhood, I think they, at that time, they were looking at 80 seats in the restaurant and 80 seats, approximately 80 seats in the the rooftop. When, in this packet, when I count, I get 127 seats in the restaurant and 150 seats upstairs, which is correct. And when we do these calculations, do we use the, like the capacity of the building or a restaurant or something, or do we use whatever number?
So right now, this is at a concept level, so we have not reached out to like, say, fire department to ask what the capacity is or a building. So this is all concept level. This is the maximum that that they could have just based on parking. That's what we're looking at at this stage.
Okay. The number of employees seems a little low. If we look at caddies, since caddies is the only information that we had, they were talking at 100 employees. I think they ended up 94, something like that. And every day, they're probably having half of those people there. We are about twice the size for restaurants and bars, but I think a bar would take less people. I just want to make sure we're okay, since we've been litigated already.
So we got these numbers from the developer, and these are the employee counts at at one time, not all of the employees. So just keep that in mind as well. The developer may be able to answer this question better than than staff.
Okay. And then another question. Is there a limit to the number of cabanas that they can put out or the size or the location? Do they have to keep them all above the mean high water line? Or are they put it anywhere in the in the plan?
So that is something that we have actually not discussed with them, but that is definitely a valid point. I think that's something that we should discuss tonight.
Okay. And then I think the last, well, not a couple. The full food or full restaurant service? Is it either a full restaurant service or no service? Or is there a partial service that they serve drinks and or drinks and appetizers or something like that? That's not covered in our agreement?
Let me go to that section. So the non-guest, non-hotel guests will have access to the restaurant, but not to the cabana use in restaurant area out on the beach. The developer may also discuss this a little bit more in detail than than I can.
Cabana is kind of a strange term. It can be a one-person cabana, it can be a four-person cabana, something different sizes. And really want to make sure that they leave enough beach at the bottom for residents, citizens, visitors to be able to get by. And if you've got 56 or 53 rooms, you may end up with 100 cabanas if they're just single ones, and that takes up space. So just want to make sure we're doing right by citizens.
Absolutely, I think that that is something that we should discuss with the developer. And we can do that tonight. Ask them what what their plans are and see if we can limit that. I wanted to point out that that's the condition G, the cabanas and the lounge-type chairs and cabanas. That will also be recorded in the restrictive covenant along with the amplified sound.
And then I'm also a little nervous about the the setback on Gulf Boulevard for the parking garage. And the sidewalk there is, five foot is a minimum that's required. And it's right up against the the road. And that's a lot of traffic from people. And now we're getting scooters and bicycles and things on that. If we move the setback, reduce the setback, and now you have the building closer, you've got an intersection that has people waiting to cross and not a lot. And their sight from people pulling out of 146 or people on Gulf Boulevard is is reduced.
I think that's something that we should discuss with the developer. Also, the architect will have the setback from the building to the sidewalk or building to Gulf Boulevard. I'm sorry, but I do not have that in front of me, that that number. So that's something that we can discuss.
But in in our, I think in the, like the C1, and maybe we talk about 25 feet setback for everything on that touches Gulf Boulevard. And we are, we have that on the the Gulf side. And I think we've shortened that so that there's, so it works better at the back of the lot next to residential area. But I'm just not sure that that's the safest option. So I don't know if that's something that can come up with once the, as part of the traffic study. If that's something that they will do, or if that's too late, these guys will already have decided what they want to do.
I think that's a conversation we can have with the developer on that setback and the traffic on, you said 146 or 145th or both?
Well, 146 is where you're going to have the people coming out of the the parking garage and waiting to cross. So, and that's going to be where you're also going to have all the traffic coming out of the garage and traffic going down that. So it's just going to be busy, and you're going to have people trying to pull out, and they think they're clear. And they start out, and all of a sudden the lights are flashing. So it's, we already have that problem in caddies, it's, don't want to do it again.
Understood, yes.
Okay, so I think that's it, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And now we do cross-examination. Ms. Cole, do you have any questions from Ms. Ron?
Not specifically unless I can ask her. I can respond to the Commission or I can.
We'll just bring you back as rebuttal after we hear from the public. Okay, there being no other questions, no cross-examination. This is the time now we'll allow the public to speak. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, if you could step forward, please state your name and make your presentation. Does anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Evening, Madam Mayor and members of the board. My name is Michael Burke. I reside at 14401 Gulf Boulevard in Madeira Beach. I'm within 300 feet, probably within about 50 feet of the of the proposal. This whole proposal relies on ignoring the plain language that you have in your own ordinance. In Ordinance 110388, you say PD Development must, you use must. And then you go to Sub 2, and it says add a maximum, so very defining language. Be designed to reflect the average intensity, height, and massing of the surrounding property of similar zoning and use. Your own planner has acknowledged that there is no surrounding property with similar zoning and use. You have to go at least five blocks away, which would not, in my view, in my submission, constitute anything like the plain language of surrounding property to be able to find anything higher than five stories. They want to go to seven stories. All of the buildings of surrounding, all the surrounding buildings in the surrounding properties are five stories or less. And my other concern is that in attempting to, in effectively ignoring the term surrounding property, you have not, and the staff and the developer have not identified the buildings that they are relying on that provide this average density and use. They've said, well, there's an example here, and there's an example there. But they haven't given you the buildings that they are relying on to get this average zoning and use. They certainly haven't indicated that they're including the schooner property itself, the hotel. So my main submission is that this whole application really, it's it's colored up and it looks pretty good, but it's kind of like the kid's story about the emperor has no clothes. Because when you look at the requirement to get to the concept of average height, you have to deal with the surrounding property. There is no surrounding property that gets to a height above five stories. So I would encourage you to be, you know, to be as judicious as you can and to use your discretion to exact whatever you can out of it. Because this this one, if it went to court, I think a court would take a much stricter view of surrounding property than the planners or the proponents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Anyone else have anything they want to present? Anyone else from the public? Okay, Ms. Cole, it's your opportunity now. Any rebuttal testimony that you want to bring forward? Maybe respond some of the questions or concerns?
Thank you, and just to confirm, is there a, I hope I have, can be afforded the time to both respond to your questions and then offer our conclusion and rebuttal, so.
There's no time limit.
Thank you. Um. Thank you for the time and your very good questions, and I'll answer some of those specifically first before we move in. So first to respond to the question about the setback along Gulf Boulevard. On the east side of Gulf Boulevard, if you look on, and I know it's very difficult to see, but on Site Plan Page A-1.3 is, I think, probably the closest, it's the ground floor parking plan that's provided to the city. And you can see that while the setback from the property line is five feet, the setback from the edge of curb of is 21 feet. You can also see that the plan includes the site visibility required triangles that are required by both your engineering department and FDOT. And coming, turning left from 145th and turning right from 146th, I have those correct, right? It, they, neither, the building as proposed does not violate the set site visibility triangles. So I thought that was important for you all to see that. Additionally, there is an existing over eight-foot sidewalk that is there. And the area between the sidewalk and the edge of the garage will be landscaped as part of the public commitment there, providing a much better environment than exists today. And excuse me while I flip through, I was taking notes to be sure I responded accordingly with respect.
21 feet is all I needed to hear, I just.
With respect to parking, Mr. Percolizi can speak as to the parking calculations, if you would like for him to. But in essence, I think the ultimate statement is that the areas that are ancillary to the resident, to the transient accommodation use cannot have more seats open to the public that would not be ancillary than what can be parked. And so during the site plan process, no matter how many squares or chairs are shown on a plan, if there's not a parking space to support it, it would, it couldn't be permitted from an occupancy standpoint. So that is a backstop that your code in allows for and provides and at site plan review, that's what the staff would be looking for, those specific occupancy requirements. Does that respond to your question with respect to that? And so the site, the parking calculations, and again, I apologize, it's difficult to see on the Architectural Site Plan 1.0, but there are the parking requirements that go through exactly as Ms. Rowan said on the site data table. And they go through each one of the code sections, and you get to a required parking of 126. And then in the far right column, you see what the provided parking is 120 times spaces. With respect to the number of employees, the applicant does operate hotels now. And so his estimate of eight employees to support those uses is based on current operations at his other properties. And based on the fact that in a hotel, this is not caddies. This is not a bar that's turning over tables. This isn't a restaurant turning over tables. This is a hotel that has some ancillary uses and that is providing a service to its guests and those who are at the hotel for other purposes. And your code, interestingly, does not provide a significant level of what is known and Mr. Percolizi could speak to as internal capture for those uses. And so this is probably a greater amount of parking than would be required in many other communities. I can also say when valet parking occurs, when, if it occurs, that has the potential of increasing the parking capacity to the extent. So I think with respect to the use on the beach and the cabanas and the area seaward of the mean high water line, I would rely upon Mr. Trast's determination. But it is pretty well-settled law that the area between the seaward of the mean high water line and the edge of water is going to be available to the public. And I would imagine, unless there was an extraordinary approval, to encroach on that area would not be permitted by the city, but.
It's happening right next door to it. At County Park, you can't walk through it. I don't know, the last time you guys, I'm bumping into people's chairs, people with fishing poles and hooks and dead fish.
For their, for public.
This is, this is right, this is right there. So I mean, when, since this is happening right next door, we don't want it happening anywhere else. And I don't know what we can do about the County Park, but that was the part of the concern, I'm assuming. Because I walked the whole length of Madeira Beach. You can pretty much walk it fine until you get to County Park, and it's just packed. And it's not pleasant sometimes to walk through, and your hotel's right next door. So I'm sure that was, certainly that was a concern of mine. I'm glad you brought it up, but.
But I think that's, those are public people, they are allowed to to use that in front of the the County Park. We just want to make sure that.
So we're, okay.
We not, we're not putting the chairs down there where it's difficult for somebody fishing, I guess, to, to do.
So you're concerned is that they're going to put cabanas or.
Yeah.
Lounge chairs right up to the waterline? I think we can get them to agree not to do that. I would hope.
I just didn't know if we could.
Absolutely, we can put it in. Now's the time. Yeah. So, okay.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Cole?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I think the applicant would be amenable to the condition to this PD specifically reflecting the customary use. It's the status of the law that everything seaward of the mean high water line is public, is publicly accessible. So, um, I'm just checking my notes on the questions, just to be sure I respond to each of those questions. Before I give my conclusion, well, I think we'll discuss the conditions of approval. But I did want to put on the record, the condition of approval Q, as it was stated in Ms. Rowan's presentation, the draft, the actual ordinance that's before you has slightly different language. And I think as Ms. Rowan stated it in her presentation is the correct language, the draft, the ordinance before you in condition Q takes language specifically from the development agreement condition and references a specific exhibit C that would be attached, which is the restrictive covenant. I believe, Mr. Trust, the ordinance itself should instead simply state that a restrictive covenant reflecting those restrictions should be included. So for, I don't know if now's the time you want to go through the conditions. And I apologize, I didn't see that when it got posted last week. We don't object to the condition. I just want to be sure that the ordinance language, in the event it's approved, is correctly reflects. And Mr. Gomez's name and signature. It's a condition Q, which is, but it's on page four of the ordinance. It says the form of the restrictive covenant is attached here too as exhibit C, which is the direct language of the proposed development agreement that you have not yet seen. But I believe it should instead just delete that language. Unless you want to include the form covenant. So I would ask it, if there's a motion to approve the ordinance and the item that we would make that change to exhibit or to condition Q. And with that, this has been obviously a project that you all have seen and heard a lot of the residents discuss. And one of the main issues has been with respect to the height. And the developer has significantly reduced the height from what was approved last summer, which was a story and a half taller than what's before you today. It has modified the uses on the roof to, and moved those uses to create the visual consistency and conformity with the other properties. Mr. Burke and many others discussed the purpose and intent discussion of the plan development section. I think it's important to note that that is the purpose and intent section. Then sections 110 dash 393 goes on to provide specific criteria of how a planned development must meet the purposes and intent. Ms. Rowan went very specifically through those items to discuss how it does, including the compatibility in the neighborhood, the compatibility with other projects, the conformity with the comprehensive plan. If the intention was to only look at the immediate adjacent properties, then no new properties would eventually get, get developed that meet you, the goals in your comprehensive plan, which are very clearly stated to provide that. With that, the evidence that was presented before you tonight and with, through the application and the staff report and the experts that contributed to that, we would respectfully request the approval of both the redevelopment plan and the PD rezoning with the change in the rezoning ordinance to the condition Q, which references the specific deed restriction and change it to a general reference that a deed restriction would be incorporated.
So before you sit down, if you want to address direction relative to condition N, how does the developer want to proceed with that?
Uh, condition N, the developer has proposed.
Condition up there so we know what we're talking about. Thank you.
It is the one relative to the park in the open space to the rear of the garage. And in discussions with the staff and with the neighbors, it was important to provide a transition between the parking deck and the neighborhood. And the developer thought it would be nice to provide a public park in that area, or at least a playground that would provide some sort of amenity for the neighbors. There is a, some restrictions in your code based on the type of development of whether that could be a public park. We hadn't discussed with staff whether the commission would ever want to accept responsibility of that park. I think from the developer's standpoint, we are comfortable with condition N as it is for adoption today. And then in the future or at the site plan process, approval process, if you want to offer direction to the staff about whether you may want that to be a public park. You don't, you'd rather just see it to be grass. That can be incorporated in the final development plans. So it, I, I think we have a matter of flexibility there. We're simply provide, hoping to provide an additional public benefit to the city.
Is that area no longer needed for drainage then?
It is not part of the proposed stormwater drainage area, which is to the north of that portion of the site.
So our choices are on condition N anyway. I don't know if we want to put anything off for later, frankly. I'd rather kind of nail it down. It's shown as a park on the concept plan with the developer having responsibility at this point, right? That's the condition. We just don't know how big of a park or how much of a park we want to make. I mean, we don't.
Well, technically.
Typically put a bunch of stuff on our little pocket parks anyway.
So, right. Technically, it wouldn't be open to the public according to this prohibition.
Got it.
So that, that, I think is the crux of the issue. Happy to provide a park, but only the users of the hotel. Would we need to put signage up to limit the use of it? I, I don't, I, I'm looking at Ms. Rowan or Mr. Gomez. I, I mean, I don't know that the city's ready to say they want to like to take it, accept responsibility for a park, but. So I think that was the compromise of just removing the equipment and having it be green space. But honestly, from the developer's standpoint, we would.
Can you put some parking spots in there? Come on, we need everything we can get.
It's a resident, no, we can't.
Residential because, okay, got it. But I thought it was part of.
It has an underlying land use of residential, so off-street parking would not be an appropriate use there.
So let me just jump in here. You can go ahead today and approve, approve it as the way that it is presently presented. It's going to come back to you for a second reading. And we maybe all have time to flush out the issue of becoming a park or not a park and maintenance responsibilities. There's been a no analysis done of that and city manager will probably want to address that, so.
Yeah, I want to go look at it.
In addition, you know, it can come back at the final site plan approval as well. So I, I don't, I don't want you getting hung up on this that you have to actually make a decision tonight relative to, do you want to park there or do you want, you know, it to be grass? Either way, it's not, you're not, because the public is not going to have access to it. It's only going to be for their project.
Okay.
So. Okay, so with that, Ms. Cole's completed, city staff has completed. There's no additional summaries necessary. So it needs to come back to the commission for consideration. We're going to need to do a couple of different motions.
Well, can we discuss it first?
Well, you'd put a motion on the floor and discuss the motion is what you would do. So on the redevelopment is what we're at right now. Before we get to the ordinance, I need to read it by its title as well. So right now, you need to act upon the redevelopment application, which is agenda item 8A. So.
Do I have a motion to approve the redevelopment RDV 2021 dash one? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve RDV 2021 dash zero one.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, now do we discuss it?
Yes, sir.
I guess.
Go ahead, you can start.
In due to previous litigation and things, I think it's getting closer. But I'm still nervous about the height and what problems that's going to cause going forward. I want to thank the developer for putting in the the loading docks and things like that. It's, this looks better. I'm just nervous that we're getting the city in trouble still with the height.
What do you mean lawsuit wise or?
Yeah.
There's no one here complaining about it. I don't.
You should not be concerned about the litigation. You should, you should determine whether or not it meets the requirements of the code, the criteria that you're reviewing, and don't be concerned about litigation. Apply the criteria, that's your job today. But I don't really think that you should be concerned about that when you're considering the application. That's not one of the review criteria. What are the possibilities of being sued if we adopt it?
You know, I will say, I own some property in St. Petersburg Beach, St. Pete Beach. Criteria was used on property that was a mile away on my property. So to say that there is no properties that have that height close to that is simply not true. There are a number of buildings right along there that are taller than what has been proposed by the schooner project. So I'm all in favor of approving this project.
Okay, maybe I said that not completely right, of us being wrong in the heights. And I don't know how to get past that yet.
Well, you look at the, they gave us examples of other buildings. I mean, Ocean Sands, four or five blocks away, they had it here as like 10 stories. I've sat there and counted those stories. It's like 14. And then there's three more on top in the form of buildings and towers and all sorts of stuff. So it's four blocks away.
But then in our plan for the city center, we have a picture of one of the tallest buildings and we say, we don't want to do that.
We're not.
So we are.
No.
We are headed in that direction.
Picture of Ocean Sands and then look at the picture of the schooner. The schooner looks like a fifth of the size of the Ocean Sands buildings. If that.
Do we know how tall the Ocean Sands?
It's 11 or 12 stories.
Yeah, so probably 130, 140 feet. About 130.
I, that, I think we're safe there. I think it fits in with the surrounding. I mean, what's there now is probably half of that anyway, right? Only worse because it's got the terrible traffic pattern and it's not pretty. And this is going to have greenery around it and I don't know.
But traffic pattern, I think we're fixing some things and making other things worse, so. It will be interesting to see what the this county comes back or the state comes back and tells us.
Well, I, I personally, I think this new concept looks really good. I especially like the way that the east side building looks. Because I was concerned with that being just a parking lot. And no one wants to walk by a parking lot, but this is really attractive with the fountain and the, and now we got three stories. So I want to thank the developer and the group for doing that. I think the parking deck looks terrific. I think our planning commission did a great job in defining some of those conditions and zeroing in on some things that we didn't discuss last time. So I want to thank them too, but you know, the density is not maxed out. It's much improved to look at. It increases the public space. The greenery is a lot better. It's got a smaller appearance than what we had already previously. And, and most of all, it responded to the neighbors and the citizens' concerns. I mean, no one here, except for Mr. Burke, you know, is, is up in arms about this as we've seen with some projects in the past. So I rather like it. I personally think we've met all the standards in code section 110 dash 393 as presented by Ms. Rowan. So I'm, I'm in, I'm all in for, for it personally.
Dave, I, I think you have some great questions. I, I think you called some things out that I wasn't even thinking of, so thank you for that. But I have to echo the vice mayor's sentiment. I think these guys really took the heart, what was bought to us from the summertime until now, went back to the drawing board and put together something that I think, you know, you're not going to make everybody happy. This could be three stories and somebody's going to come up with some reason why it, it doesn't fit into the, into the scheme and all that. But the, you know, because remember in the beginning, they were talking about not even doing, that was the second phase of the project by doing the east side of the building. And they listened to what everybody said. They came back with a different plan. They reduced the height on the other side of the street. You know, i- i- it's one thing to really try to get your project across and try to cut corners and do different things. But when you, you know, take in what people say and then you bring back a proposal that meets all the requirements. And Jenny, I think you did a fantastic job, by the way. I think that, that presentation, those, some of these in the past have been a little long and drawn out and snooze fest. But I think, I think you did an awesome job really presenting the piece by piece, how, how we walked it through and how you guys did your due diligence on this. So, you know, congratulations. But Dave, again, I, I think your questions were fantastic. And I think we got the answers that we needed on all of them, so goodbye, man.
Anybody else? No. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. So we can go ahead and move on to agenda item B. I need to read that ordinance by title only, Vice Mayor. So I'll go ahead and do that. This is ordinance 2022 dash zero one. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property generally described as 14,500 Gulf Boulevard parcel 093115870480000010. 14,550 Gulf Boulevard parcel number 093115870. Fourteen thousand five hundred fifty Gulf Boulevard parcel number zero nine three one one five eight seven zero four eight zero 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 two zero. Fourteen thousand five sixty Gulf Boulevard parcels zero nine three one one five oh five two nine. Zero 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 one zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 two zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero zero zero. Zero zero three zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 four zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 five zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 six zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 seven zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 eight zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 nine zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five two nine zero 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 one zero zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 one one zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 one two zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 one four zero. Zero nine three one one five zero five nine two nine zero 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 one. vacant lot to the west of one oh six, one hundred and forty fifth Avenue East, parcel number zero nine three one one five five four three zero six zero 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 three zero. vacant lot to the south of fourteen thousand six oh one Gulf Boulevard, parcel number zero nine three one one five eight seven zero four eight zero 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 seven one zero. One oh six, one hundred and forty fifth Avenue East, parcel zero nine three one one five five four three zero six zero 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 four zero. And fourteen thousand five oh three Gulf Boulevard, parcel zero nine three one one five five four three oh six zero 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 two zero. From medium density, multifamily residential R three or planned development P D. Retail commercial C three or planned development P D. And low density multifamily residential R two or planned development to planned development P D district. Providing for reading by title only and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one by title only. There's no necessity for an additional presentation, it's already been completed. So it'd just be a motion to approve that ordinance, subject to the deletion of the sentence that was referred to in. Condition Q, and that would be the deletion of the words. The form of the restrictive covenant is attached here to as exhibit C. It's not necessary for it to be in there, so it should be deleted from that ordinance. So it's back to the commission for consideration. So we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance two zero two two dash zero one with the deletion of. The sentence in. Stipulation Q.
One second.
Okay, so there'd be discussion on this motion if there is any.
Then for me. Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
I'd like to propose we take a five minute break, if we can. All right, back on, this meeting is reconvened. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty two, the amendment to our floodplain management. Okay, plan.
Mayor, I need to go ahead and read, Vice Mayor, need to read that ordinance. So this is ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter ninety four floodplain management of the code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach to amend section ninety four dash ninety three. To add definitions for manufactured home and recreational vehicle to amend section ninety four dash one oh three to provide for zoning limitations on installation of manufactured homes and occupied recreational vehicles. Providing for applicability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two by title only.
Right, the amendments to the city of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, chapter ninety four floodplain management are regulated and monitored by the state of Florida and FEMA. The proposed amendments to chapter ninety four will not allow the insula- installation of manufactured homes in the flood hazard areas. The city currently does not allow manufactured homes in the floodplain. The amendments solidify the current practice and assures the city of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances is in good standing with the Florida statutes and the National Flood Insurance Program's community rating system.
So basically, we're adding these or amending these definitions just to be compliant with what the county would like?
Correct, well, not the county, the state and FEMA. So the state and FEMA contacted us and told us that we, it was required that we change this, chapter ninety four to what's proposed in your packet.
Now, we seem to be making motions before we discuss things now, is that what we're going to do again?
This rules say that you're, you make a motion, you discuss the motion, right?
Okay.
So.
We'll have to specific there, okay. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two.
A second.
Now, I, I understand that there's no one here in the room, but we are to open it up to the public. For those that are watching to understand that it is a public hearing, but there's no one here.
There's no one here. Does anyone out there who's not there wish to come up and make, give a public comment? I guess not.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think I just discussed, is any discussion on this?
Yeah, I have, I have a question on here, Jenny. And that is, it mentions recreational vehicles. Can you touch base on that, please?
Sure, so there is manufactured homes and the recreational vehicles, which is any occupied trailer. So it prohibits the many, the manufactured homes and the recreational vehicles.
What, what about one just sitting in someone's driveway?
Just a minute. It's occupied recreational vehicles. If you see page two thirty two of the packet.
Okay.
It specifically says occupied.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If nothing else, clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is. Ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh three regarding our comprehensive plan text amendment and the activity center.
So I'll read that ordinance by title only. This is ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero three, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Madeira Beach. To establish a land use category for activity center, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero three by title only.
All right, the proposed amendment simply creates a land use category consistent with the countywide rules. That allows for the establishment of activity centers. There's no specific property or location that's associated with this text change, it's simply just the definition. The amendment adds a category of use the community can choose when updating its plan and map in the future. Adopting the activity center designation for a specific property or area would require a separate land use map amendment and the adoption of. Regulating policies to define the manner in which the activity center would be developed.
So this is basically just putting a tool in your toolbox.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. We've already created a city center. Activity center. How did we do that if we're? If we didn't have the tool then?
So if you look, let me flip the page. Page two thirty eight on the packet, or actually it's on two thirty seven. You have the plan redevelopment mixed uses, which is that P R M U. That's what the current town center special area plan, that's the land use designation. But it's specific to that, this activity center designation. If you compare it, it's, it's the same thing, it's just cleaning that up. That it's just a broad activity center and the county, and it's more clear with the county's. Definition and consistency, calling it an activity center instead of that P R M U use.
And then the table above where we show. The size, less than an acre, between one and three acres and greater than three acres. Units per acre, those seem to seem really, really high. Can you give like a location or definition of, when would it? When would we have a place that has greater than three acres and a hundred and twenty five units per acre?
So this is actually in the, this is already in the comprehensive plan. And it's for the result, resort facilities high land use category. And we actually don't have a resort facilities high, we only have resort facilities medium. And that's, you'll see all the resort facilities medium land use along the west side of Gulf Boulevard. But we don't have a resort facilities high land use. We have the definition, but we don't have the land use in that. I don't know how long that's been in the code, but I, the comprehensive plan, but that's currently what's in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so in Madeira Beach, the chance of that happening is like zero.
Right now, correct. And you would, it would go before you if there was a possible land use change to that. Resort facilities high, but as of now, there's been no. Move towards that, that land use.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash three, the comprehensive plan text amendment, activity center, first reading, public hearing.
I'll second it. Okay, we need to open it to the public.
Oh, shoot.
Pardon me?
No, you're good.
Oh, yeah, because we don't have anyone in the audience unless Megan would like to come up and have a disc, okay?
Okay.
No, I'm good with this, I know what, what we're trying to do with this and be compliant with what the county needs us to do, so. Anything else? No?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is under unfinished business, resolution twenty twenty two dash oh one regarding our parking fee commitment.
I'll read that resolution by title only. Resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida. Committing additional parking revenues generated from the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty eight. To be used exclusively as a funding mechanism for the design and construction of a parking garage facility within the city of Madeira Beach, Florida and providing for an effective date. It was a reading of resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one by title only.
So I can just give you the, the brief overview. So ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty eight was passed in first and second reading in November ten, December eight respectively. Increasing the parking fee from two dollars and fifty cents to three dollars with the intention of supporting future enhancements to existing parking infrastructure. So what this commitment in essence does is takes that, that additional fifty cents earned on all parking fees across the city. And commits them to the construction of the parking garage within the city of Madeira Beach. So finance will handle the accounting aspect of that. We're not, we don't necessarily need to create a separate bank account and open a new bank account for this, we can handle it within the general ledger. And that's how we'll, we'll track both the, the committed revenues that will go in and then it would be then subsequently reduced. That committed balance would be reduced by eligible. Design, engineering, construction expenditures of a new parking garage. I'll address any questions if you have them.
I think. I do have a little bit of concern because we sold this parking increase to the Johns Pass. Business owners. As a way to get them more parking. But we don't have anything in the resolution that says, it just says within the city of Madeira Beach. I think we need to say something like. Within a half mile of Johns Pass Village or. South of a hundred and thirty fifth Avenue, some, something to that effect. So that we aren't using this to build parking garage for the rec center. After we, after I told everyone in my district, we were going to build it so that the Johns Pass Village could have more parking, I mean.
Oh, no, I know what you're saying, I, I think what, what it's designed for is that, I, I don't. We're committing this money towards. The design of the parking lot on a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirtieth, I think is, is where it is, a hundred and twenty nine. But it doesn't mean we're pulling, so if, I don't think there's anywhere else we can build a parking garage at the moment, but. But after that one's constructed, I mean, there's no reason to, that money should continue to go into that fund and then if we have other land. We can, this isn't going to be dependent on us, but we'll all be off the board by, by the time that a sec, a second parking garage would be even, even discussed. But I don't know, can you, can you, can we get specific about it? What if something falls through in the design of, on a hundred and twenty ninth or a hundred and thirtieth when we're trying to put it together and it doesn't work there? I don't think we should pigeonhole ourselves to that particular spot or. I don't.
That's what I'm saying, within a half a mile of Johns Pass.
But is there anywhere else within a half a mile of Johns Pass where we could build it? Then what happens if we can't within a half a mile of Johns Pass?
Then, I'd, well, maybe we put initially for Johns Pass.
Yeah, that's fine.
If, if possible.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I think it's, you know, I think everybody knows what the purpose is. If we can throw a couple of letters in there and, or a sentence in there to make that, make it happy, I think everybody knows what the, what the purpose is of this.
But it doesn't say that, so that's why I'm, I want to make sure. I'm, I'm looking out for my Johns Pass, make sure they, they get what we've promised. So can we say? Can we add some words, in other words? Used exclusively as the funding mechanism for the design and construction of a parking garage facility. Initially within a half a mile of Johns Pass Village, if feasible.
True.
And providing for a, you know, instead of within the city of Madeira Beach.
I'm fine with that word.
More specifically, within one half mile of Johns Pass Village. To add to, at the end of it, something like that.
Yeah, and, and, and to give ourselves, I mean, if it. And, and, and to give ourselves, I mean, if it comes to be that we can't build one there, then we absolutely need an out. But I think we need to donate some sort of funds to, if not a parking garage, there's some parking solution to Johns Pass Village, so. Yeah. Maybe it does sound better putting it at the end.
At the end, just more specifically within, as you stated, within one and a half mile of Johns Pass Village.
Yeah, I have no problem with the wording. I think we, we just got it, the purpose of it, Evan, let's, the purpose of it is for our, obviously our, our residents. That. The, the money that's generated after this is done will keep their taxes down and the likes of that. So there's a long-term goal there too. So not, I, I just hope whether we're clarified here. We're not building this for Johns Pass or for the Johns Pass merchants. They're going to be the beneficiaries of it, but we're building this for the benefit of the city, right?
Absolutely, for all of us.
Yeah, yeah, let's not, let's not pigeonhole ourselves by saying we're building this for their, you know, because we promised them that we were building this. That's, we're, we're doing it for the benefit of the city. So I just, you know, I, I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves with, with, with wording. And you, you, you stated it perfectly before. I'm, I'm just, I, I just want to make sure that everybody heard that in the la la land there. That we're, that this wasn't just an agreement that we made with them. This is for everybody and within, hopefully within five to seven years, this thing's paid off. And this is just perpetual income for the city for the rest of time. So I think, you know, and I think it's a no-brainer.
I think you're going to get more beach parking in that location than anything else.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Do we want to just? Parking within the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, comma. Initially within half a mile of Johns Pass Village if feasible. And providing for an effective date. Right?
So here's my suggestion.
Okay.
So in the second whereas paragraph, after the word facility, it would, we would add within a half mile of Johns Pass Village. And then under section one, we delete the words, the city of Madeira Beach and put in half mile of Johns Pass Village. This is a resolution, you can change it every meeting.
Right.
Don't be so, don't be caught up in the fact that it's what, what can possibly happen in the future. You can come back next meeting and change it to a half mile of Johns Pass Village. And so whatever you want to do, you're not locking yourself in. This is just kind of given direction to city staff, what they're to do with it initially. So with those two changes, I'll make those two changes then in the second whereas and in the first section. And then it's ready for your adoption then if there's no other comment on that.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one with the changes we just discussed.
I'll second. Any public comment for nobody that is here? Okay.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, next is new business. Purchase of a Kenwood T eight-eight-oh garbage truck. Ms. Pepler?
Ms. Whup. Good evening, everybody. I'm coming to you with approval to purchase the new Kenworth garbage truck, which is currently in the budget. The two thousand seventeen that we have is at the end of its useful life. It needs. At least twenty thousand dollars worth of repairs, all of which a couple have been done within the last couple of years that need to be redone again. Just by the use. So we will also be increasing the cubic yardage from twenty-seven to thirty-two. As we know, we're really busy, so that will help tremendously. Any further questions?
I ju, I just have a question on, when I look at our packet, page two fifty-seven. It looks like if we went with a different Kenmore. Or Kenworth. That we could save a little money, but maybe I'm not reading that right.
I do not have that in front of me. Is that, is that the base price of the truck?
Yeah, it's just for the. Base chassis, yeah. I don't know whether we're pigeonholed to, to use the southern zone. And maybe that's why we went with that higher number or?
We are not. The ref that we were using prior to with the previous Kenworths that we bought had moved to the southern. He's actually given us some discounts on some of the other add-ons of the truck. It's a little bit confusing in the packet to show the build-out price because there is a lot of additives on that.
Right.
Such as increasing the size of the packer and. He's adding in a couple other things because of some issues that we've had with the current trucks that we have. I don't exactly know where those are listed at on here.
Well, there's a, there's quite a bit of all that.
There, there is, there is a lot in building a garbage truck.
All the way to two sixty-three are different things added and subtracted. Okay, I just wanted, I just didn't want us to be approving something and adding three thousand bucks to it if we could have.
Yeah.
Started with a low.
We've worked with Mike for quite a few years now, so he, he does take good care of us. He's thrown in a few free things on a couple of the trucks. So we're not, it may look on paper as if we're paying a little bit more from that base price, but when it comes into the additives, we're not.
Okay, I'll trust you on that.
Yeah.
How often do we fill up a truck? That, and have to?
On Monday, we have four trucks in our fleet. On a Monday and a Friday, we will pack out all four. On a Wednesday, typically one and a half trucks. On a Saturday, two trucks. So it just, it depends. I mean, in season, we run to the dump twice a day. In the mornings and then, and the afternoons again, to make sure we're ready for the next day.
Okay.
TMI.
We have a lot of garbage in Madeira.
Megan, that's both residential and commercial.
Correct.
Including yard waste.
Correct, yard waste on Wednesdays. So that's why it's a little less on Wednesdays.
Well, we've approved it in our budget already, so I don't have a problem with that, it's fine with me. If you want to proceed, anybody else have?
I think it was slightly more and that's fine.
It was slightly more due to the shortages and the lead time on this truck is probably twelve to fourteen months.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes.
Oh, okay, we need a motion. I'll make the motion to pass. The purchase of a Kenworth T eight-eight-zero garbage truck.
I'll second.
Any public comment? No one here, so.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Okay, next is staff reports. Did have one thing to mention, let me make sure it's in the proper area. It is. I guess it's of request. I, I did download the city of Madeira Beach mobile app, my Madeira Beach. And I looked at news. And we, we have a red tide update on there from two thousand twenty-one. I think we should just get rid of that. It doesn't look good. It goes unfortunately, blah, 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 you know, I just don't. I know it was news at the time, but it, it was like the fifth news item down, so.
They're in, kind of in calendar order, so to say, but once they lose their, their.
Value.
Value, right, use, then we will, we will remove it, yeah. Thank you, that's a good suggestion.
And the only other comment I have is, and this is. For the city clerk, page two eighty-five. I think we need to. Because I'm not sure we're doing this, are we accepting public comment by email in advance of each meeting?
No, that was supposed to have been removed if that's still in.
It's still in there, page two eighty-five. And maybe we specifically say public comment made in person and let the people know it's a three-minute limit, okay? Other than that. Marina's doing great.
Vice Mayor and Commission, certainly lots of work occurring throughout the city and lots more that will be. And I am again honored and humbled to be the city manager. Appreciate all the welcome, but as you can see, staff continues to be extremely busy. Lots of projects, certainly lots of daily activities, obviously marine activity, parking activity. Fire response, et cetera. So lots that we do on a daily basis that hopefully, I've already heard from several residents who were, have, have read this. So I'm, I'm under the impression that it is, hopefully more people take an interest and read the information. There's quite a bit of useful information. I know there's some data and statistics that not everybody may want to look at. But again, really do appreciate the work that staff does. It certainly makes it easier coming into an, an organization in a city and seeing extremely dedicated. Men and women that truly care about what they do and truly care about all the residents, the businesses and, and certainly the many visitors that we have. So thank you to all of them.
Yeah, everyone's contribution looks.
And thank you to the commission as well for your direction and guidance, obviously.
Yeah, so the Holiday Isle project, even though it says no updates, they did, somebody did update it. So maybe we ought to just get rid, rid of that big red, no updates. That shows up a time and time and time and time again and makes me think that we're just letting that property languish. When I, I have noticed myself, there's some movement going on there and so.
They did, beacon.
Yeah, they cleaned it up quite a bit because. So maybe we have the building department take that no updates off.
Will do.
But wow, there is a lot of. Lot of projects going on. So let's move on to the agenda setting. Already got five items.
Okay, do we think we have time for a sixth one or is this enough?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I'd like to discuss adding a noise ordinance from seven AM to eleven PM. The Pinellas.
Right.
Pardon?
You mean eleven PM to seven AM?
No, we have that now, it's fifty-five decibels, but something from the morning until that time.
Okay.
Pinellas County has one and we can look at that. It, it's, it ignores all lawn mowers, blowers, things like that. But they set a limit of like sixty-five decibels. And I don't know if this is something that our officers. Can measure if they have the equipment. So just if somebody can talk to the officers and, because I mean, we've had trouble with Barefoot Beach and places. And we can't do anything about it because we have no ordinance for the time that they're making excessive noise and.
The Barefoot Beach? What have they?
Aren't they the ones with the weddings?
Yes, they've had a few events in the last several months. Typically, the concerns have been though, later in the evening to the night rather than during the day. But, but I think the commissioner is pointing out that there, there could be some, I mean, during the day rather than just, yeah, your common, common noise throughout the day.
I've got one thing and, and I apologize because I, I was out this meeting, but I couldn't, I, when I tried to watch it online, I couldn't find. What I was looking for and I didn't see it in the notes. Did we ever talk about? Or, or talk about the insurance for the commission members again?
Yes.
We did and we decided against it.
Oh, okay, is that what it was?
It was kind, it, it came under city attorney report. I was asking for a direction, so there was no specific agenda item. It was maybe two or three meetings ago.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we started getting people wanting to run for things and jump on boards and everything else. At that time, so we thought, well, I, I think we kind of. It, it was a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to add something if we get to it. I don't think we're, we're going to be too long with these things, but I'd like to revisit looking at our dogs on the beach. Ordinance. I know we need to. Clean that up and shorten it and. Because I don't think it, I mean, part of it is we, we will take your dog, which I know we can't do.
Nor would we want to.
Yeah, nor would we want to, exactly. So I mean, that was one of the. Things in there, I think we can clean it up and make it nice and short and, and also in that same thing, I'm going to. Probably ask us to have our hotels and condos post something. So that people who come here with their pets know not to take them out there. And I'd, I'd like some, you know. Concrete parameters of what types of dogs and pets can go out there and what cannot.
You're correct, I think a lot of visitors do take them on the sand because I've observed our officer just politely remind folks about. Seven or eight from the time I've been here and we're all just visiting.
So we need to clean up the dog, dogs on the beach. Step ordinance. All right, that's it for me, anybody else? All right, if not, let's move on to reports and correspondence. Anybody here have? Board of Commission, okay.
I just wanted to state that the Oaks Club here in Madeira Beach, they sent out the invitation to everyone, I believe, for the twenty-ninth of January. And they're really good people. And if you can make it, that'd be great. It's put on by the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chambers and it's from six to nine PM. And it's supposed to be really great. So in case you all didn't go, I know the city manager is just going to be going with those two.
I'm going to go, so.
Very casual, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a Hawaiian theme or something like that, so that's.
I'll be like, so casual.
Yeah. I, I, I do have one thing real quick. First off, well, to our new city manager, welcome, Robin. I, I, I think you're doing a wonderful job and, and I really have to give you kudos on one thing that you did. And I don't know if anybody told you to do this, but I asked for this a while ago. But these end of the week updates that you send out to us via email are just fantastic. And I, I think they're fantastic for a lot of reasons. This way, we're all getting the same information. And I think that that's something that's been lacking in the past. I mean, we've all kind of sat up here before, had individual conversations with different city managers or different staff. And some of us were lost saying, well, wait a minute, this wasn't presented at a meeting. Putting those out to us is just fantastic, keeps us all on the same page, keeps us all, and it keeps the meetings probably going to be flowing a lot quicker. So thank you for that and keep up the good work.
Yep.
Okay, library meeting is on the twenty-fourth at four thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will be discussing the. Twenty-fourth, yep, at four thirty and the library board.
Oh, the library.
Library meeting.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Library board, yes.
So.
Absolutely.
Bringing my alternate and then if you can come out and introduce you to everybody.
Thank you, yes.
It, it should be a pretty smooth meeting, but. Anybody else, city attorney, your turn?
Just briefly, as you know, I, I provide you on a monthly basis a litigation status report. And I, I know that's confidential and I don't want to go into the details of any of it here. Just to remind you that it's important to keep up, to take a look at that once it comes. Sometimes there's not a whole lot of activity to make some changes. One change you'll note is, is that one of the Michael Burke lawsuits has been dismissed. It was dismissed prior to actually serving the city. That was the one for, I think, injunctive relief relative to the schooner project. So it has been dismissed. There's one still pending that may become moot now because of the fact that, you know, if you approve the PD rezoning on the second reading, that will do away with, you know, the prior, the prior ordinance. So that one may go away to as moot, but I want to let you know that the, the lawsuit, the second lawsuit that the city wasn't served with, they were just sitting back with that one. We did check and it was dismissed on December twenty-first. So just a heads up.
Good. City Manager, anything to add?
Thank you, just very, I'll try to be very quick. Seventy-fifth anniversary, Madeira Beach, we're celebrating all year long. And you're going to see the logo and adding events and activities. So everyone be on the lookout for seventy-fifth anniversary, including the big events that will be on May the fifth for sort of a Founder's Day. Also next week, January twentieth to twenty-third, I brought this kind of little show and tell.
Oh, yeah.
You know, seafood fest. Hopefully everyone that's listening, watching, will watch. Welcome to come to Madeira Beach, John's Pass for the seafood fest.
Still be looking for volunteers.
They still are looking for volunteers in contact of Jay, Jay Hatch or Max McCoskin in our Recreation Department. And then every Wednesday, the Madeira Way, Madeira Beach Market, just a reminder, vendors selling all sorts of interesting things, including a wallet that I bought. I didn't bring it with me. Wallet made out of recycled motorcycle material, rubber. Thank you. Very interesting. You'll find all sorts of pretty unique things. And again, thank you to everybody for the wonderful welcome and very pleased again and humbled and honored to be the Madeira Beach City Manager. Thank you.
You're welcome. Finally, City Clerk.
Well, we have the election coming up March the fifteenth and just proved ballot language today and sent that back to the Pinellas County Supervisors of Elections. And for seat one, we have on the ballot, of course, we have a referendum on the property sale and we have three charter amendments. And for seat one, we have the incumbent Helen Price and David Tagallera, Tagala Rini. And then for seat two, we have Chuck Dillon and Ray Kerr. And then I also wanted to ask, as you know, every time we have charter amendments, we always do a little town hall and the, the attorney and I and the city manager will sort of, it's not a Board of Commissioners meeting, but I didn't know how you would want to get that out this year. Maybe we can just add a topic to each agenda and allow the public to ask questions or get more information on it or just have the little town hall meeting. Because sometimes, you know, we don't have a whole lot of people that come.
That's right.
You know, usually, usually the chambers does the, the talk at the end, the rebate, whatever you want to call it. They're not going to do it this year.
That's the forum and I believe that they're working on that. And I think that the Women's League of Voters is also working on one. I'm not for sure. I've been getting calls, asking for information. I have provided candidate contact information, the referendums that's on the ballot, the charter amendments and all. And so I'm thinking, because they both did one last year, the year before last. Of course, last year we didn't have an election, but year before last, they both conducted one. So I'm thinking they may, hopefully soon we'll get confirmation and when that will be.
When are the signs allowed to go out and all that? When, when does the election actually begin or the pre-campaign?
The campaign signs can go out January fourteen, this Friday.
Oh, okay.
Which is sixty days prior to.
Here we go, all right.
Oh, yeah, it's, we're gearing up, we're gearing up. So do we want to do a town hall about the?
I, it, there's nothing really that controversial on here. I mean, it's like, we could probably do it during the end of a meeting or something like that. Just open it up as a, as a topic. I don't think for the sale of a property that's delinquent, we're going to get a whole slew of people in here for a whole town hall. So I don't know.
Yeah. Now, I tend to agree.
I, I.
Why don't we just add it to the end of every meeting or discussion at the end of every meeting, recap it? That'll get in front of people four times.
Something like that. I think that's probably the best thing.
I would suggest at the beginning.
Yeah, the beginning of the meeting, let them come in if they have something to ask about, great. If not, go on to the next subject. I, I just don't think, there's nothing really controversial that anybody's going to be in here jumping up and down about. So I just let, put it out there, but I don't think we'll really have a whole lot of people chatting about it.
I think this is the first time I haven't had any citizens to call asking about any of those. Well, we have to see. The ballot's getting ready to go out, you know. So in early February, I think. And so we'll see from that too. But in the meantime, we'll still continue having the, the topic on every agenda at the beginning.
Let's do it at the beginning, right.
And I'll coordinate that with the city manager. And then also, and we can look at how we want to do the meet and greet. I mean, by, at the end of March, by the end of March, the last day, we have to swear in the commissioners. And then the fir-, according to the city charter, the first meeting for the new commission is the first meeting, the regular meeting after the election, which the regular meeting is a week before the election. And I didn't know if you wanted to move that or just take along and have, have the new one start in April.
Isn't there some sort of a deadline of when a commissioner comes on board? And then when we need to discuss format of our meetings and.
That is the, yeah, that's the policies and procedures for the BOC. Because the, the city charter says within ninety days of the election, you do that. So on, in April, I'll have that at, or end of March, I'll give it to the commission. And you'll have a lot of time to work on that. And then it'll be discussed at the April workshop.
I see. Let's just keep our schedule.
Okay. Yeah. We can probably have that ceremony maybe the last Wednesday of the month. There, there's an extra week. And we can decide, in March, you can decide a time and if we want to have like food or whatever.
Yep.
I'll leave that to you all, how you need to do that.
Well, we probably need to include the whole commission in that because even when Happy and I ran a couple of years ago, we never had anything with the residents on any kind of introduction or anything. I'm sure everybody knows us by now, but that's when COVID started. And so, so we've never been out there to have any kind of, of little get-together with the residents. So really, really, it could be something, same way with Commissioner Hudson and Commissioner Andrews. We can, that's something we could all participate in, really.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, I spoke to the city manager about that and let him know about the, because of COVID, you know, we couldn't do anything special for the commissioners and all, and how it would be something nice. And he gave me some ideas that he could share. And so, yes, that's a great idea.
Well, e- even wrap it around part of the seventy-fifth anniversary. Maybe. Okay.
Andrew said he'd do a dunk tank.
Not again. That's, it actually felt pretty good, didn't it Doug? It was a hot day.
I'm not doing a dunk tank, I'll tell you right now. Okay.
Okay.
That would be great.
No, no, actually, Robin has to go in the dunk tank. He's the new.
Yeah, he's like.
Wouldn't be the first time I've had that.
It won't be the first. All right, if nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned at nine oh three PM.
Thank you, guys.